Pause. Palermo. Festerson. Harding. Jerem. Melton. Mr. President.
Here. Would everyone please stand for the pledge of allegiance and remain standing for our invocation today by Councilmember Vinnie Palermo?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. President. I think it's only appropriate that while attending a few touching events over the last couple of days with my fellow council members, that today and every day we keep in our thoughts and prayers the peace and fire that serve our city and to those who have passed on in the city and the state, and also to the military men and women who protect our freedoms each and every day, and to those veterans that have given the ultimate sacrifice. With that being said, one of those freedoms is to vote, and if you're not aware, today is that day to vote. So you only get one, no matter who you are, no matter how much money you have. So today is that day to exercise that freedom. Please vote. Thank you.
Thank you.
An affidavit publication is on file for the pre-council and city council meeting, and a current copy of the Open Meeting Act is posted in the white binder on the east wall of the legislative chambers.
Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to this meeting of the Omaha City Council. The city council thanks you for joining us this afternoon. Before we begin, as a courtesy to those in attendance, we would ask you to turn off or mute any of your electronic devices. And before we begin, the major portion of our agenda today, we have a proclamation that Councilmember Amy Melton would like to read up, and Amy, you have the floor.
I would, and I'd like to call while I read that. Sam, if you could come on down to the podium because you were so important in here in Haven. So whereas Ione Worthman was born on September 16th, 1926, on a dairy farm near Coleridge, Nebraska, and whereas Ione married photographer Alfred Worthman, they located Omaha in the 1960s and raised five children. And whereas Ione joined the Audubon Society and began fighting for the conservation plans for Nebraska rivers and protecting our natural springs and wetlands. Whereas her most notable work was in the 1990s when she worked with the NRD to collect donations and purchase land on the last Oxbow Wetlands of the Big Papillion Creek near 120th and West Maple Road. And whereas, working with the NRD, the Nebraska Environmental Trust, and the Boy Scouts, they cleared the trails, built walking bridges, and a visitor's center now known as Here in Haven. And whereas thousands of visitors come to Here in Haven every year to study, observe, and enjoy more than 150 species of birds, various animals, and duckweed, the smallest plant in the world. And whereas Ione continued to volunteer for Here in Haven well into her 80s, receiving awards from the Nebraska Wildlife Federation and the National Audubon Society. And whereas Ione shared her passion in the hundreds of environmental and nature programs she presented, as well as the conservation columns she wrote for the Audubon Society of Omaha and the Friends of the Here in Haven newsletter. Whereas Ione Worthman has been referred to as a fierce protector of wildlife and one of Nebraska's iconic conservationists. Now therefore be it resolved that the city council of the city of Omaha declares Thursday, May 17th, 2018, Ione Worthman Day. And if anybody hasn't been out to Here in Haven, out off 120th and Maple, here's an example of one of the species of birds, and Sam, if you could introduce yourself and tell us about this bird real quick.
Oh, well, my name's Sam Bennett. I'm the president of the Friends of Here in Haven. I took Ione's place after she was unable to do it. This bird is, I saw it first Thursday afternoon. It's actually an immature little blue heron, which we've never seen one in Here in Haven before. I'm told it's not necessarily a rare bird to Nebraska, but they call it a common rare because there's only two or three of them seen in the state of Nebraska any year, and we've got one in Here in Haven that was still out there last night, so I'm assuming it's still there today. But just to give you an example of some of the stuff that we have out there.
And it's right there off 120th and Maple. I think there might be a lot of people that don't even know it's there, but it's a great place to take your kids, or just to take a quiet afternoon by yourself, just to go and think. So it's absolutely wonderful, and Ione was a wonderful, wonderful lady who did so much. And by the way, she kept 168 unit apartment building from being built there. That's what got her motivated. She went door to door and raised money and then found a couple donors, and she stopped a big development. Larry Jovan, you can walk out of the room or cover your ears. But it was fabulous. Sam, here you go.
Okay.
And on Thursday, if you're going to name the street, Ione Worthman Street, is that correct?
Yeah, yeah, Thursday. Thursday, we're having the unveiling at 7:00 in the evening.
Congratulations.
Well, thank you very much. Thank you all.
Congratulations. Adam Clark.
Items six to nine relate to the same project and can be considered together for the landing located southeast of 30th and Bird Streets. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval. Item six, an ordinance to amend the boundaries of the ACI-1 PL overlay district to incorporate this property into that district. Item seven, a resolution to approve the final plat for the landing. Item eight, a resolution to approve a special use permit application submitted by 2929 California Plaza LLC for a large project special use permit in a geo district. Item nine, a resolution to approve the landing subdivision agreement.
Public hearing agenda items numbers six through nine are today. Proponents, please. Seeing none, are there any opponents? Seeing none, public hearing is closed. Mr. Harding.
Thank you, Mr. President. Looks like Todd's a little busy working away, but... Oh, there you are. Can you, can you come up, Todd? I just had a couple of questions.
Todd Easton, 2223 Dodd Street.
Thanks. I just, I know the, the bridge was recently blessed, and I wasn't able to be at the ceremony, but I wondered, I know we have the Bob and potentially the baby Bob, and it was interesting. I was doing a little, little investigation, I guess, and looking at some of the history of Creighton University, and, and since Mother's Day was last weekend, it's interesting that it was actually Mary Creighton who put the money up for Creighton University. So I wondered if we should name the bridge the Mary or something like that. But it's a great connection between your development and Creighton University, and I want to thank you for your continued investment in Omaha. You put a lot at risk, and Omaha's to benefit from it. Thanks.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Second.
Moving second to approve items six through nine, there are no further lights. Roll call.
Pauls.
Yes.
Palermo. Harding. Jerem. Melton. Mr. President.
Yes.
Items six to nine are approved six to zero. Item 10, a resolution to approve the Maple 180 preliminary plat located northeast of 180th Street and West Maple Road. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval.
Public hearing agenda item number 10 is today. Proponents, please.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. Members of the council, Larry Jovan, 11440 West Center Road, appearing on behalf of the applicant. This is just a preliminary plat at the northeast corner of 180th and West Maple Road, consists of about 31.36 acres in total, of which 22.88, I'm sorry, 22.86 acres will be mixed use. This is just what it looks like. You had one big box retail, you got a sit-down restaurant, other retail opportunities, a C store on the corner, and then office use, and then of course you've got your green corner and all the other aspects of a mixed use development. So with that, I'm really here just to answer any questions, but this is again just a preliminary plat.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Are there any other proponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, are there any opponents who wish to be heard?
Hello, council. My name is Mark Von Drossick. I live at 211 South 37th Street. I'd like to, not being maybe seen as an opponent, is more of a constructive criticism. These large developments need to be built with more taken into consideration than just car traffic. I'd like to just say once again, I've spoken about this before, before the council, these large developments need to have bicycle and pedestrian infrastructure built into them with careful and meticulous thought. If you go out into west Omaha, we have a lot of places you can see large developments where it's almost impossible to walk from the street sidewalk to any business in any large developments we have out there. So I just want to reiterate that we need to have and we need to think about bicycle and pedestrian infrastructure when we approve large projects like this. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other opponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, is there any rebuttal you know with which?
Thank you, Mr. President. Members of the council, Larry Jovan, 11440 West Center Road. There is actually a trail system that is being constructed along the main access road, and the only other thing I'd point out is 180th and West Maple Road is a 165 acre mixed use center, so it's the largest mixed use center that we have in our master plan besides the West Roads area. So what it calls for is that you can have commercial mixed use development to the, to the half mile in all directions from the intersection of 180th and West Maple Road. So this is consistent with the master plan and obviously comes to you with full staff recommendation of approval as well as unanimous approval from the planning board. So with that, the, the trail runs along this main interior roadway and connects back up through the neighborhood, which is Sagewood, to the east.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. With that, the public hearing is closed. Any, there's no lights, is there a motion? Moving second to approve item 10, there are no further lights. Roll call.
Pauls. Palermo. Harding. Jerem. Melton. Mr. President.
Yes.
Item 10 is approved six to zero. Item 11, an ordinance to rezone the property located at 1217 Pacific Street from HI District to MBD District. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval.
Public hearing agenda item number 11 is today. Proponents, please.
Good afternoon. My name is Ron Hackett, 3515 Oak Ridge Road, Omaha, 68112. I am part of the development team for this project, and it's just a nice small infill. We're looking for a zoning rechange, and Chris Jerem called me and asked if I could show a few elevations, so that's why I'm here.
Okay.
We're going from heavy industrial to MBD. We're looking at a fairly upscale design that puts three flats, residential flats, on top of parking. Parking being the lower level, and this is Pacific Street right down across the bottom of it, and this is a nice little project that overlooks downtown, and we're hoping to capture the view of the skyline. Just another perspective of that here, this is looking straight from the west, again, a bird's eye view, just at the, got three residential flats. We have a rooftop deck and a very simple, clean design. And this view is of the front of it. It's called the switchback design because we take the front facade and we skew it a little bit just for architectural interest. That's all I have.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, are there any opponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, public hearing is closed. Mr. Jerem.
I want to thank you for coming down. It's a, it's a neat project for this part of the city and the little infill. As you say, I thought when you described it, I had no idea what you were describing, so that's why I asked for the renderings and the elevations that you brought really do reflect that it will be a great project for that neighborhood, so I'm pleased to support it. Motion approved.
Moving second to approve item 11, there are no further lights. Roll call.
Pauls. Palermo. Harding. Jerem. Melton. Mr. President.
Yes.
Item 11 is approved six to zero. Items 12 and 13 can be considered together for the property located at 1514 Williams Street. Item 12, an ordinance to approve a PUR overlay district and an R6 district, and to approve the development plan. Item 13, an ordinance to rezone this property from GI District to R6 District. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval.
Public hearing agenda items numbers 12 and 13 are today. Proponents, please.
My name is Kyle Hazy with E&amp;A Consulting Group, 10909 Mill Valley Road, Omaha, Nebraska. I am representing the applicant, Adam Watson. We are requesting at the subject property of 1514 Williams, as shown outlined here, a rezone with the PUR. The current zoning is general industrial. We are asking that be rezoned to R6 with the PUR waivers that we are requesting are due to the minimal size of the lot. It is only 25 feet wide by 137 feet long. These waivers match the existing setbacks and buffers of the existing neighborhoods, the surrounding properties. We have worked with the planning department to come up with a plan that everyone is comfortable with. With the proposed project, we are looking to have a multi-family unit that is three stories tall with three units total on the site. We believe that the pro, proposed development will positively impact long-term redevelopment of the neighborhood.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents who wish to be heard? I'm sorry, does that conclude your...
Yes.
Okay. Are there any other proponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, are there any opponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, public hearing is closed. Moving second to approve items 12 and 13, there are no lights. Roll call.
Pauls. Palermo. Harding. Jerem. Melton. Mr. President.
Yes.
Items 12 and 13 are approved six to zero. Item 14, an ordinance to rezone the property located southwest and southeast of 22nd Street and Willis Avenue from R4 District to High Density and GC District to R4 District. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval.
Public hearing agenda item number 14 is today. Proponents, please.
Terry Morrison with Airheart Griffin &amp; Associates at 3552 Farnham Street, here representing the owner. I'm here to answer any questions.
Okay, thank you. Are there any other proponents who wish to be heard? Those in favor, anybody proponent?
I'm James, with your owner at 2219 Willis Avenue, and I, they have talked about rezoning that area, so I'm just wondering what's, I don't know, does this process go into, go into the rezoning? Because I went down to the rezoning officer one day and asked him, could I get it rezoned to, to a property to build, build something on it? And they say that's a, that's a residential property, you know, thing it could be all known as a house. So I don't know whether that has been changed since then.
So your question is, is this, is it the property that we're talking about?
Is it the property they want to span to? It's a property at 2219 Willis that, that the school wants to span their property to.
Okay. So if I, if I understand you correctly, you want to know why you can rezone this area but can't rezone the area that you were interested in?
When I went down and asked them, could I rezone that area?
The area that you...
They said, no, not, that's a commer, residential area, and it couldn't be rezoned to other business.
Okay. And you need an answer to that, is what you're looking for. Okay. Mr. Mr. Fanslard, planning, I think probably might be able to help us out there.
Sure. Dave Fanslard. I can give you my business card, and you can email me or call me, or we can step outside here in a couple of minutes, and you can describe to me what property you were talking about, and if there's any questions I can answer today, I will.
All right.
If not, I will put you in touch with somebody in my department who can help you out, at least answer your questions.
Yeah. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Yes. Same, same agenda item?
Same question.
Okay.
We have a question. Our property is at 2301 North... 22nd Street, next to Jesuit School. So they are rezoning, are they taking, are they taking the property, our house, and tearing it down, or what are they doing?
Can we have your name and address?
Yeah, name and address for the record, please.
Sorry, Barbara Summers Robinson, 5506 Ellison Avenue.
Thank you. So...
So you're asking the same, are you asking the same thing?
Yeah, the same.
But since it sounded to me like you were asking something different. Are they taking your property? Is that...
That's what we want to know. It says rezone, are they taking it? The school, is the school, our house is next door to the school, Jesuit School.
Okay.
Are they taking our property and tearing it down? Is it theirs?
No.
What are they doing? You said rezoning.
Yeah, I don't think so. I think they're just rezoning that. If you could, if, if the developer can come back up just for a second, I think he can explain a little of that to you.
Terry Morrison, 3552 Farnham Street. They're not acquiring any additional property. The property that they're rezoning, they already acquired. There were some houses on it that they've already torn down. They're directly west. The property that they acquired is directly west across the street. Three of those lots that they acquired were already zoned residential. One lot was zoned general commercial, which that is what we're rezoning here, and that's all being included in a conditional use permit for the school to, I guess, to be in use in a residential zoning. So there's no additional property acquisition that they haven't already done.
Okay, so you're not taking their, there's no chance of taking their property?
No.
Okay. Does that answer your question?
Oh, yes.
I'm sorry.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Public hearing is closed. Is, there are no lights, is there a motion? Moving second to approve item 14, no lights. Roll call.
Pauls. Palermo. Harding. Jerem.
Yes.
Melton. Mr. President.
Yes.
Item 14 is approved six to zero. Item 15, an ordinance to rezone the property located at 4524 and 4602 Farnham Street from GI District to CC District. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval.
Public hearing agenda item number 15 is today. Proponents, please. Seeing none, are there any opponents? Seeing none, public hearing is closed. Moving second to approve item 15, no lights. Roll call.
Pauls. Palermo. Harding. Jerem. Melton. Mr. President.
Yes.
Item 15 is approved six to zero. Item 16, an ordinance to rezone the property located northwest of 11th and 11th Streets from DS District to CBD. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval, be it communication and support.
Public hearing agenda item number 16 is today. Proponents, please. Seeing none, are there any opponents? Seeing none, public hearing is closed. Mr. Jerem.
Didn't have my glasses on, so I didn't want to make sure. Yeah, the, this is a project that I just want to make a couple of comments on before making the motion. For those of you who don't know, it involves the Kenecko Collection Building Expansion. It's a $20 million project. It, a very important destination and community asset, the Kenecko Museum. It'll house June Kenecko's collection for viewing. It's my understanding that almost 60,000 visitors a year come from all over the world to view that collection. It'll be about 23,000 square feet addition, and its work hopefully will be met with the rebuilding of the street for those two blocks soon too, so you'll have a nice street for people to access the, the collection. So I'm pleased to support it and move to approve.
Moving second to approve item 16, there are no further lights. Roll call.
Pauls. Palermo. Harding. Jerem. Melton. Mr. President.
Yes.
Item 16 is approved six to zero. Item 17, an ordinance to rezone the property located at 3924 and 3926 Harney Street from GC District to MBD District. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval.
Public hearing agenda item number 17 is today. Proponents, please.
Dan Dozel, Airheart Griffin Associates, 3552 Farnham Street, civil engineer for the project, here to answer questions.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, are there any opponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, public hearing is closed. Mr. Harding.
Mr. Dozel, could you just explain a little bit about what this is? When I was reading, it said something about outdoor dining for most of the year?
Yes, that's correct.
Can you kind of explain a little bit of that? We live in Omaha, by the way.
Owners from Washington DC.
Okay.
It's very popular there, and you'll have a building that houses the operation and the storage of the food and the liquor, and you sit outside. They have these heaters. He tells me if it gets too cold, they're just going to shut down because their main months are July, August, September, and if it's 20 below, they won't be open, but if it's 20 above, they will be. But you sit outside, it's open tables, it's a, it's a bar with seats around it, but you really, there's no building enclosure per se.
Thank you.
Mr. Jerem.
And these projects at this phase are the conceptual, so while that's the plan, ultimately, the way I understand the project, the dust settles, it's still floating.
Well, that was, that's the most I've been a part of, but he's been working with TBA architecture.
Right.
And there's been probably discussions I haven't been a part of.
But it, it takes the structure that's currently there on top of the hill, and that would be replaced by this...
That's correct.
The new structure, right? And then possibly the lot to the east.
Yeah, I heard there, are there any negotiations to obtain that next piece?
But before anyone gets their hopes up to have this experience, it's not quite settled yet, so it's conceptual. Thanks. Motion approved.
Moving second to approve item 17, there are no lights. Roll call.
Pauls. Palermo. Harding. Jerem. Melton. Mr. President.
Yes.
Item 17 is approved six to zero. Item 18, an ordinance to rezone the property located at 4911 Underwood Avenue from R8 District to MBD District. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval.
Public hearing agenda item number 18 is today. Proponents, please. Seeing none, are there any opponents? Seeing none, public hearing is closed. Second, roll call.
Pauls. Palermo. Harding. Jerem. Melton. Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed, six to zero. Item 19, an ordinance to rezone the property located northeast of Turner and 12th and Harney Streets from R1 District, large lot to R3 District, medium density. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval.
Public hearing agenda item number 19 is today. Proponents, please. Seeing none, are there any opponents? Seeing none, public hearing is closed. Roll call.
Pauls. Palermo. Harding. Jerem. Melton. Mr. President.
Yes.
Item 19 is approved six to zero. Items 20 and 21 can be considered together for property located at 147th and F Streets. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval. Item 20, an ordinance to rezone this property from LO District and CC District to CC District. Item 21, an ordinance to rezone this property from R6 District and LO District to R6 District.
Public hearing agenda items numbers 20 and 21 are today. Proponents, please. Seeing none, are there any opponents? Seeing none, public hearing is closed. Moving second to approve items 20 and 21, there are no further lights. Roll call.
Pauls. Palermo. Harding. Jerem. Melton. Mr. President.
Yes.
Items 20 and 21 are approved six to zero. Items 20 and 21 are approved, six to zero. Item 22, an application to consider a Class C liquor license for Maverick and Goose Social Club LLC doing business as Winchester located at 7002 Q Street.
Public hearing agenda item number 22 is today, proponents please.
Mr. President, members of council, good afternoon. My name is Mike Kelly, 2804 South 87th Avenue, appearing here with one of the applicants, Matt McGinn, who's in the back, if you have any questions. This is the kind of changing of the guard, Winchester Pub, who's been there for as long as I can remember, which is a long time, is selling lock, stock and barrel to the Leavers folks with the same type of operation planned in the future. So I think it's a perfect match and I'm glad it happened, so we'd ask your blessing.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, are there any opponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, public hearing is closed, Mr. Palermo.
I just had a question. Will there be karaoke there, do we know?
Yeah, I believe so, karaoke and volleyball.
Move to approve.
But again, I won't be doing any karaoke.
Well, let's see here, Mr. Palermo. Did anybody second? I will second. You seconded? Moving seconded to approve item 22, plus the karaoke, roll call.
Pauls, Palermo, Harding, Jerem, Melton. Mr. President.
Yes.
Item 22 is approved, six to zero. Item 23, an application to consider a Class I liquor license application for Fajitas LLC doing business as Fajitas Bar and Grill located at 6222 North 72nd Street.
Public hearing agenda item number 23 is today, proponents please.
Hi. She's owner for the Fajitas, she's Lilia Mercado.
Yeah, name, address for the record, please.
It's 1829 South Street. Apartment B4 Blair, 68008. Her name is Lilia Mercado, from Fajitas.
Is she to your right?
Yeah.
Okay.
It's for the license.
Okay.
Yeah.
And you're just here to answer any questions we might have?
Yeah, we'll just come. Yeah, I'm sorry.
Yeah, maybe you don't know. I know, you're just kidding. All right, thank you. Are there any other proponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, are there any opponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, public hearing is closed. Is there a motion? Moving seconded to approve item 23, no lights, roll call.
Pauls, Palermo, Harding, Jerem, Melton. Mr. President.
Yes.
Item 23 is approved, six to zero. Item 24, an application to consider the reconstruction of an existing licensed location of Come and Go LLC doing business as Come and Go number 372 located at 7152 Pacific Street.
Public hearing agenda item number 24 is today, proponents please.
Counsel, my name's Eric McDonald, 7101 South 174th, and I'm the district supervisor here to answer any questions.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, are there any opponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, public hearing is closed. Second, roll call.
Pauls, Palermo, Harding, Jerem, Melton. Mr. President.
Yes.
Item 24 is approved, six to zero. Item 25, a resolution to appoint Tucker B. Beglin as manager of Legacy Blatt LLC doing business as Blatt Beer and Table to their Class CG liquor license located at 2835 South 170th Plaza.
Public hearing agenda item number 25 is today, proponents please.
My name's Tucker Beglin, 17115 Camden Circle, Omaha, Nebraska.
Thank you.
I'm here to answer any questions if you need.
Thank you.
Yes.
Are there any other proponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, are there any opponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, public hearing is closed. Moving seconded to approve item 25, there are no lights, roll call.
Pauls, Palermo, Harding, Jerem, Melton. Mr. President.
Yes.
Item 25 is approved, six to zero. Items 26 to 31 can be considered together for manager applications for Walmart Inc. to their Class D liquor licenses for the following locations. Roger L. Radloff for Walmart 1637 located at 6304 North 99th Street. Joseph M. McLean for Walmart 3151 located at 5018 Ames Avenue. Evan D. Oakey for Walmart 3267 located at 18201 Wright Street. Brian E. Bell for Walmart 4358 located at 1606 South 72nd Street. Gregory S. Armstrong for Walmart 5141 located at 16960 West Maple Road. And Brian M. Hardy for Walmart Market 4138 located at 13105 Birch Drive.
Public hearing agenda items numbers 26 through 31 are today, proponents please. Well, will all the managers please stand up? And you all are here to answer any questions that we may have. All right, stand in line, I got a few, just, no, just kidding. Thank you all. Are there any other proponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, are there any opponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, public hearing is closed. Moving seconded to approve items 26 through 31, there are no lights, roll call.
Pauls, Palermo, Harding, Jerem, Melton. Mr. President.
Yes.
Items 26 to 31 are approved, six to zero.
I have a series of questions for you all next year, so just be ready.
Consent agenda, any member of the city council may cause any item placed on the consent agenda to be removed. Items removed from the consent agenda shall be taken up by the city council immediately following the consent agenda in the order in which they were removed unless otherwise provided by the city council rules of order.
The public hearing agenda item number 32 was held on May 8th, 2018. Moving seconded to approve item 32, there are no lights, roll call.
Pauls, Palermo, Harding, Jerem, Melton. Mr. President.
Yes.
Item 32 is approved, six to zero.
The public hearing agenda items numbers 33 through 44 today. If you wish to address the city council regarding these items, please come to the microphone, indicate the agenda item number you wish to address, identify yourself by your name, address, who you represent, and if you are a proponent or an opponent. Seeing no one, the public hearing is, yes, sir. That's all right. Is that an agenda item number you wish?
Number 41, yes, sir.
Thank you, sir.
My name's Mark Von Drossick, I live at 211 South 37th Street. I'm a proponent of this measure and I just wanted to say, even though this seems like a small piece of infrastructure, small little projects like this really matter in making neighborhoods more walkable and bikeable and that translates into healthier people in neighborhoods and it translates into healthier economies in neighborhoods and healthier neighborhoods in general, safer neighborhoods, I would argue. So I just wanted to say I approve of this expenditure and I hope that you spend a lot more money on bicycle infrastructure in the near future. Thank you.
Thank you. With that, the public hearing is closed, Mr. Jerem.
Yes, Mr. Bench?
Brooke Bench, Parks and Recreation.
I noticed this new trail is going to be built on the south side of Pacific, which would be running along the north side of the 11th Fairway at the Field Club. Is that accurate?
That is accurate.
What is the Parks Department going to do to protect people like Mr. Von Drossick from my errant shots?
We've had numerous meetings with the golf course. I think we have a good, we're putting up a screen. We've sat down for the last, oh, probably over a year, and I think we really got a cool design that I think people are going to like and it's going to benefit the golf course and all the people in that area.
And you've worked with the neighborhood and the golf course to come up with this design, is that right?
That is correct.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. There are no further lights, is there a motion? Moving seconded to approve items numbers 33 through 44, roll call.
Pauls, Palermo, Harding, Jerem, Melton. Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed, six to zero. Item 45, a resolution to approve a settlement agreement for the Edward W. Hosniaga versus City of Omaha in the amount of $185,000.
Public hearing agenda item number 45 is today, proponents please. Seeing none, are there any opponents? Seeing none, public hearing is closed. Moving seconded to approve item 45, no lights, roll call.
Pauls, Palermo, Harding, Jerem, Melton. Mr. President.
Yes.
Item 45 is approved, six to zero. Item 46, an ordinance to authorize a purchasing agent to issue a purchase order to Midwest Laboratories Inc. in the amount of $64,725 for professional laboratory testing services for a contract period of April 1, 2018 to March 31, 2020 with one optional two-year extension.
Public hearing agenda item number 46 is today, proponents please. Seeing none, are there any opponents? Seeing none, public hearing is closed, next item.
Item 47, an ordinance to approve a real estate purchase agreement with 75 North Revitalization Corporation to convey the property located between Corby Street and Parker Street in the amount of $1.
Public hearing agenda item number 47 is today, proponents please. Seeing none, are there any opponents? Seeing none, public hearing is closed, next item.
Non-action items, items 48 through 58 do not require public hearing or city council consideration at this meeting but will be placed on a future agenda for public hearing and/or vote. The reason for non-action is noted after the item on the agenda as well as the date the item is expected to appear on the agenda for consideration.
Motion adjourned. Thank you. Is there a second? Moving seconded to adjourn, roll call.
Pauls, Palermo, Harding, Jerem, Melton. Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed, six to zero, meeting adjourned at 2:38.